Roll call.
Harding.
Here.
Jerem.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Palermo.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Brinker Harding?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we are meeting here today to conduct matters of business for the benefit of our community, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, thought, and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion in your name. Amen.
Amen.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this city council meeting. The council thanks you for joining us today. For those in attendance, we would ask you if you would, out of courtesy, turn off or mute of any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six to eight relate to the same project, Westbury Creek. Item six, an ordinance to rezone property located southeast of 216th and F Streets from A.G. to R4. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven, a resolution to approve the final plat for Westbury Creek located southeast of 216th and F Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eight, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement for Westbury Creek.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers six through eight are today. Proponents, please.
Hello, Pat Hillier, 14710 West Dodger Road, representing the developer. I'm also here with John Bachman, SID Attorney. Westbury Creek's 174, single-family lot at the southeast corner of 216th and F. We appreciate the favorable recommendation from planning. We're here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items six through eight, there are no lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six to eight are approved, seven to zero. Items nine to twelve relate to the same project, Westbury Farm. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone properties located southwest of 216th and F Streets from A.G. to D.R. Item ten, an ordinance to rezone properties located southwest of 216th and F Streets from A.G. to R4. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eleven, a resolution to approve the final plat for Westbury Farm located southwest of 216th and F Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twelve, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement for Westbury Farm.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers nine through twelve are today. Proponents, please.
Hello again, Pat Hillier, representing the developer. Westbury Farm is at the southwest corner of 216th and F. We have 256 single-family lots, 23 acreage lots. That's due to the president development zone. We're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items nine through twelve, there are no lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items nine through twelve are approved, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7E, agenda items thirteen and fourteen shall be laid over two weeks. Item fifteen, a resolution to consider a Class E Entertainment District liquor license application for Marcus Omaha LLC doing business as Omaha Marriott Downtown at the Capital District, 222 North 10th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number fifteen is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Here on behalf of the applicant, this, of course, is the Entertainment District, which you all are very familiar with, and the first endorsement for a Class E license for the Omaha Marriott. The manager is here present if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item fifteen, no lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifteen approved, seven to zero. Item sixteen, a request to appoint Clark Anderson as manager of Foxton Properties LLC doing business as Holiday Inn Express and Suites to their Class I liquor license location at 17677 Wright Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixteen is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, my name is Clark Anderson. I'm owner of the Holiday Inn Express out on 17677 Wright Street in West Omaha, and would like to ask permission to be appointed as the manager of the current liquor license. We've had this liquor license, I think, for about four and a half years, but I'm just asking to have my name put on it as manager.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item sixteen, no lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item sixteen approved, seven to zero. Item seventeen, a request to appoint Suji Park as manager of Suji's Restaurant Group LLC doing business as Suji's Korean Grill to their Class I liquor license location at 1303 South 72nd Street, Suites 101 and 102.
Public hearing on agenda item number seventeen is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Randy Elshman, spouse of and representative for Suji Park, owner and operator for Suji's Restaurant Group LLC. We've had, we're just changing the manager designation on this. He used to be our lawyer for the first year, and we've changed it to Suji for this year, starting this year.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item seventeen, no lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eighteen, a resolution to consider a special designated liquor license application for DVN Inc. doing business as Cozy Lounge, 5813 North 60th Street for an outdoor band on September 30th, 2017, from 8:00 p.m. to midnight with music until midnight.
Public hearing on agenda item number eighteen is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Nick Brown, owner of Cozy Lounge, 5813 North 60th Street. Here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item eighteen, no lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eighteen is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers nineteen and twenty were held on September 12th, 2017. Moved and seconded to approve items nineteen and twenty, no lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items nineteen and twenty are approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 21 through 33 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Lieutenant Jay Levitt, representing the Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. I'm here to speak as a proponent for item number 32, here if you have any questions.
Yes, I do. Thank you. And we also have a, if Tom is here, Tom, if you can come to the microphone for a minute, if you would, please. Tom is our newest appointment to the MECA board, and he's item 33 on our agenda. But I did want him to have an opportunity to, if you wanted to make any comments, and we also wanted to thank you for being a part of this and offering your service.
Thank you, Mr. President, Tom Kelly, 8820 Arbor Street, Omaha. I just want to thank the entire council for their consideration and respectfully ask for your favorable consideration. It's an honor to serve the city. I've had the pleasure of doing it at a couple other opportunities with Omaha Library Board and along with the Planning Board, and I can, neither of those boards are as challenging as the council you sit on, but I can certainly appreciate the service you guys give to the city, and I hope to replicate that on the MECA board. MECA, obviously, is a steward of two of the city's most valuable physical assets, TD Ameritrade and CenturyLink, and I think MECA is blessed with excellent leadership now, and my hope is I can only add to that going forward. So, thank you all for considering me, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Is there a motion? Moved and seconded to approve items 21 through 33, there are no further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 21 through 33 are approved, seven to zero. Item 34, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with E&amp;A Consulting Group Inc. to provide professional services on OPW 53194 being the street improvement district 6880, South 164th Street, Poppleton Avenue to Peterson Drive project in the amount of $40,734.
Public hearing on agenda item number 34 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Yes, I'm Sylvia Bryan, one of the residents on 164th Street, and I oppose the resolution this council is planning. Due to us not being informed before they outsourced our engineer that was going to be doing it, we had been told another option of using city engineers, so I am opposing this council.
Thank you. Name an address for the record, please.
1283 South 164th Street.
Thank you.
I'm Linda Johnson. I'm at 1274 South 164th Street. I also oppose this amendment. This is not what the mayor and Todd Fitzher told us on a private meeting on 8/24, 19, 2016. We were told that it would be, that the mayor was hiring an engineer specifically to be doing this job, and now we are hit with this money for A&amp;E, which we did not know was coming into our neighborhood. Just by luck, I caught him digging holes in my front yard. I am a homestead. I'm not the only one on the hill. This is just added expenses that we have not been told anything about. We need to know what is going on, who's coming into our neighborhood, what the cost of all of this is going to be before we can really say yes or no. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents?
Yeah. Susan Thompson, 1282 South 164th Street, and I'm the liaison for the SID 6880, and what I'd like to do is put on the record our five weeks of arguments during the layover, and amendment that we've taken and a consensus of and offer to the council today to vote on. Is that okay if I?
Sure. Just hand it to our clerk here, please.
Okay, by consensus, we are offering this to the council to resolve the conflict, which, you know, my two co-owners have stated. And we do have a few, a question or two. We'd like to know who's doing the engineering on the two streets ahead of us that were petitioned before us, North 89th Circle and Leavenworth between 93rd and 94th Street. We drive those streets, and we note that engineering's been done for the circle, but it appears that Leavenworth has been ground up and packed down. I don't see any engineering flags, the pink flags, on there. So, we're wondering what's going on there and what's the holdup, who's doing the engineering. We are number three, and going back to April, we found the Nesh Engineering Company on our street, and when challenged, they said, "Are we doing the engineering for your RMD?" And that was the first we met the Nesh or even the fact that we had an RMD. And this was after we petitioned and were approved for our SID. So, when it comes to how much time has elapsed during this year for when we get started, we figure that if E&amp;A had been hired back in April, they would be, we would have the engineering and design already done, and we would probably, possibly, be starting repaving. We do, Heather did give us an option, which was very generous. She said, "They have hired the engineer, and we can opt out of the E&amp;A deal if we choose." But if we do that and we choose the city engineer, it would take several years for us to get completion of the project. Well, our argument is if we hadn't had a bogus RM, excuse my expression, RMD in April, and we had the A&amp;E, I'm sorry, E&amp;A company, we would probably be repaved by now and looking at a really pretty street. So, we're kind of concerned about how this whole project is going, and Todd Fitzher and the mayor absolutely did tell us that the city would do all the engineering and design, and to quote the mayor, which is really cute, "You would eat the costs. The city would pay for them." And so, it would have been really nice if you had, if someone in the PWD had come to us and said, "This is what's going on. We're going to choose to outsource. It'll speed up the process. We like the work that they do, and this will get the work done faster, and we need to do this to move forward for all the streets." And behind us, Ridgewood, they have been approved to have E&amp;A do their engineering. So, there are two streets that have been, who are slated to have outsourced engineering, and we don't mind that. Franklin told us to go ride the street, Poppleton and the 78th Avenue project from the end of 2016. He said, "That is the street that you will end up looking at." And so, we've done that, and we know that their work is perfectly acceptable, but we would have appreciated being told upfront that this would be an added debt, okay? We offer today an amendment. It's a little cheeky, but we figure if we don't tell you and we don't ask, we won't get. Our amendment, in the face of our arguments, is the city hires E&amp;A Consulting Group Inc. to co-manage with the PWD and city, the SID 6880 project. The city pays all E&amp;A consulting fees and bills, including the $40,734 bill current for engineering design, and all the bills to finish the project. No bill or fee from E&amp;A consulting may be made payable to SID 6880 account or for payback by that SID in assessment. And I have, and I apologize for sending you so much information over the past five weeks, but we decided to do a thorough job and see, and just clarify everything so that we can move forward by consensus and be happy with the situation that we're in. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, we'll take them.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. I think Heather. I think Heather, it would be helpful if you could to kind of walk us through what the process is, if you would, please.
Sure. Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works. As is typical with all of our SIDs, we started with the petition process, which included the petition, an FAQ, and a map that was distributed to the neighborhood champions for dissemination amongst the neighborhood. Now, in that FAQ, it kind of walks people through the process and does contemplate the fact that outside engineering is a part of this process. It also caps engineering and overhead fees at 12%, which is a part of the anticipated cost for this district as well. So, in that FAQ, which has been provided to the champion at the time as well as Ms. Thompson for distribution amongst her neighbors, we kind of spell out the step-by-step process. Where we're at right now is the design engineering process. So, at this time, the neighborhood has been provided a conceptual estimate of about $400,000 for this project. There is some contingency fees included in that, but not specific costs. So, this is kind of the first stage that we're at where we're getting specific costs. This contract, based on that conceptual estimate, is certainly within engineering standards of about 10% to about 15%. And so, we find that it's right in line with what we would consider as typical from engineering standards and would certainly support approval of it. As far as concerns about cost sharing and what was pledged to the district, my understanding is that there were a number of different options kind of being provided at the time as to how the city would participate. What has happened is that you, as a body, have passed a resolution indicating that the city's participation with this district would be 50% of the total project cost, and that's how cost sharing is coming into this district. So, that's kind of where we're at. We're getting started really kind of on that hard cost and engineering part of the process. As was mentioned, other districts have already gone through and had their engineering contracts approved. Leavenworth, as it was mentioned, between 93rd and 94th, has completed their design engineering process. It's probably why you don't see a lot of flags or markings, because they are actually balloting as to when they want their projects start. We have bids, we have hard costs, and they're balloting on that. Some of the other districts are in varying parts of design engineering, so different testing is done at different stages. Some will require flags and markings, others don't. So, for this particular district, we're kind of still at the beginning stages, mostly due to evidently some of the discussion that needed to happen and the layovers that have happened. With that, again, we would support the approval of this engineering contract, and if you have any other questions, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Melton.
Well, Ms. Tippy Pierce, don't go too far. And I just want to clarify something for people who still aren't aware of how these RMDs and SIDs work. So, this is the neighborhood. The residents that live on this street are the ones that ask to start this process. This isn't something the city is making them do, correct?
That's correct. So, South 164th Street was provided with information and options and did petition for the street improvement district. There were a number of other petitions that were submitted for a road maintenance district, but the majority petitioned for the street improvement district. So, under our ordinances and statutes, if greater than 50% petition in favor, that's when we start moving forward. So, that's why the SID option was selected.
So, but I just want to, I just want to be clear. The residents that live on this street started the petitions. They went through various options, talked to yourself, Mr. Fitzher, apparently the mayor was at a meeting, and then it's just all the different options. So, then the neighbors then take a vote on what they want to do. So, the majority of the people that live on this street voted for the street improvement district.
The street improvement district.
Okay. Because I just want, I just want to make sure that that, this isn't something that the city is making them do.
No, there were notarized ballots that were provided to the city clerk, and those are available for examination if you'd like.
So, once that's done, is there a protest period then when people who disagree can protest?
That's correct. So...
So, where are we at in this? Is that?
We have completed the creation, obviously. We have completed the 30-day protest period that, again, the majority of property owners are still in favor of because we did not receive protest petitions. So, beyond that, we are now in that, as I like to call it, hard engineering before we can actually create a formal estimate. We have to do the design engineering. We have to do the preliminary testing, and so that's the stage that we're at, and those are the services that are being provided by the contract contemplated.
Okay. And is the majority still, I mean, you didn't receive any protests at the time, but I think the question is, did they not know that engineering would be a cost or, because I'm still a little confused as to why we're, where we're at in the process.
So, as to what information was, I was not at any of the neighborhood meetings for this particular district, so I can't say, "Oh, yes, I told them this," because obviously there were others involved with that. But what I did provide to the district at multiple points was a frequently asked question sheet, which does go over administration fees, engineering, the various stages that we're at. And so, after we passed the protest period, then we have the authority to move forward with designing, constructing, and completing the project as we need. And in this case, we need engineering to be outsourced. We have currently four districts in design. We have one going into construction, and we have three more that are coming up behind. And that's certainly just something that any engineer, seasoned or not, could not be expected to complete in a matter of months.
Okay. And did we, have we, do we routinely outsource the engineering for these road projects?
We do. In fact, all of our roads' projects right now, including our, you know, 168th Street, 120th Street, all of these projects right now are in a project manager type of situation. So, we have consulting engineers that come in to complete the design and testing. Our internal staff then manage that project, which helps save on overhead fees and other consulting fees that would be required to have a consultant also manage that project.
Okay. And so, I just kind of wanted to know where we were. Is there another point at this point where the neighbors can have another vote, or that vote's already taken place at this point? So, we just move forward with the majority of the residents?
We do move forward with the majority that was voiced by failure to protest. The last point, we typically see an opportunity for the neighborhood to come forward is during the actual construction bid process, which we are nowhere close to at this point. That's where we have solicited and received formal bids. We have a formal engineer's estimate. We have an anticipated construction cost. And so, we have the rest of those hard numbers. And as I mentioned with Leavenworth, we had a couple of options. We are balloting the neighbors. So, it's at that bid phase, which we're pretty far away from at this stage, where we would typically see more neighborhood engagement.
So, for this, though, if we approve this today, and then the bids come back, and the majority of the neighbors say, "That's too much. We don't want to do it," who pays that $40,000?
That would be on the city.
It would be on the city?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So, this would only be assessed to the neighbors as part of the final project?
That's correct. It's not a separate assessment.
Okay. So, it's not something that's going to, that's going to go on their property today? So, the neighbors still have another opportunity. If the majority doesn't approve the bid, the final bid numbers, then the project won't move forward?
The project...
And nobody will get assessed?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's helpful to know.
Sure.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
And then I just, Ms. Teeger, and I see you in the audience. Could you come down?
Cassie Pavin, Mayor's Office.
Oh, and I apologize.
That's all right. I'll still answer by it.
You've been married for a couple of years now.
Yeah, two years and a few days. It's all right.
I'm still calling you by your name. You know, there was, there was just, it was kind of confusing about the, you know, and I know the mayor's office has been working on a policy for these roads, and I think that maybe this district got caught where, before we had the task force, after we had the task force. Could you maybe explain that a little bit?
Sure. There's, I mean, there's a couple of things I want to address. The meeting that was actually held in August of 2016, I actually was also in attendance to. By no means was that a private meeting. That was certainly open to the public. I think there were upwards of 75 people there, whether it was neighborhood people, other people that happened to be there, city staff. So, first and foremost, it was not a private meeting. It was very much a public neighborhood meeting. And in fact, I think there had been a couple of these prior to that meeting that then Councilman Thompson had invited the mayor to attend. During that time, as you know, there was a lot of discussion on unimproved streets, what we would do. There were a lot of questions that were coming up. There were five, six, seven, maybe even upwards of 10, that were really active at the time in asking what city participation was going to be. That's when we were contemplating getting the committee together. The committee had not formally been commissioned, I guess, at that point in time. When the mayor did speak to this particular group back in August of 16, she by no means made a promise. She outlined what she was proposing to make to that committee in terms of recommendations. Ultimately, the committee that met, that forwarded a policy onto this body, came up with what that policy would be, and some of those recommendations were not in there. Some of them, in terms of cost share, definitely weren't in there. So, I just want to make sure it's very clear as to what was promised, was said, difference between proposed and, and actually what ultimately came out of it.
Okay. And so, what this neighborhood is getting is the result of the, I guess, the task force, which was made up, I believe, of, of Dr. Thompson?
Dr. Thompson was on there at that time. There were citizens on there at that time. Actually, a wide representation of citizens from across the community that range everywhere from various parts of the community, background, situations, what that, that looked like. The committee has since met. I think the Public Works Committee was made aware of that again this morning as to what the next steps are. The committee's providing some information. We'll be forwarding that on to the council here probably within the next three to four weeks. But from that standpoint, you know, back, back in August of 16, the policy we had was the one that this body was then having to make amendments to or waive, waive. What this particular group has received was similar to what I believe there were six or seven. Mr. Stube could probably correct me on that. Probably about four to six weeks ago, the city council did approve to have a number of them cost shared, I believe, at 50/50. And, and this was one of those that was approved at 50/50. But as you know, with the policy right now, what was before you isn't in place. We kind of revert back to what was until we have a new policy that's adopted.
Okay.
But, but by your vote, I mean, this street does have a 50/50 cost share, total project cost share.
Without, without...
Regardless of whatever policy in the future happens to be, this is what their cost share is.
And, and even the recommendations of the task force was the 50/50 without engineering? Because the engineering was going to be if there was more of a...
The recommendations...
Less of a cost share from the city?
Correct. The recommendations from the committee was a 50/50 total project cost. Keyword there being "total."
Okay. And then, that's what we approved for this district?
Correct.
And that's what the neighbors...
Correct.
...approved by major, or the majority?
Correct. I, I would also be remiss if I didn't know the mayor's office has received communication from other individuals that own property along this street that would like to see this move forward, that are worried that this is being held up, and, and really just want, quite honestly, they want to work with the city to get their street done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls?
You might be able to answer this for me. Will this be the last time we vote on this project, or do we have one more?
We got one more, I think.
Okay. That's, that's the point I'm trying to get across. Even if we vote yea or nay today, if we do vote yea, we still have another chance. So, if the, there's a total disregard for this project, we can say, we can vote no?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
There are no more lights? Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr., Mr. Jarom?
Yes. First, I want to thank Ms. Thompson for keeping me in the loop. And, and it is a lot of information you sent, so I'd be fibbing if I didn't tell you it's a, it's a lot of stuff to go through, and, and I have gone through it. And as a result of going through it, as the Public Works Committee Chairperson, I've asked for the assistance of staff to gather some background information to help me decide what to do here today. And I want to thank Councilmember Melton for going through the bulk of what the questions were that I had, that I wanted to ask. But in addition to that, I would, I would add that I did have our chief of staff listen to the entire tape, get additional information as to what was said. And I'm convinced, in my own mind, that the conversation was about the policy that the mayor was intending to seek the committee to hopefully then follow through with what she wanted to do in that regard, that it wasn't something where on this specific project, that there was a promise made. I then asked the city legal, well, even if there had been a promise, is, is that a binding promise in terms of, of this group? He said, from a legal perspective, it's not. And so, that was his opinion for our benefit as we sort through this. I then asked, well, what, what is the, the, the policy of the city before the policy? What has it always been before we got to the point where we voted on the last one? And I was told that it's always been an administrative fee that's been tacked on to the street improvement districts that have gone on for many, many decades. And then, I heard for the first time this afternoon, this FAQ, the frequently asked questions information that's disseminated that has that information in it. So, I would say at this point, since we do have one more time, that this will come before us where we decide up or down to vote on it. I'm, I'm comfortable voting to continue moving forward here today based upon what we've done. And would say that, as a general anecdote, you know, and I've been in those meetings, I'm sure we all have, where people leave a meeting thinking you said one thing, when you're really, in your mind and your heart of hearts, didn't think that you had said that, and, and you don't know how the impression could have been given. But we are where we are because there's a miscommunication in the minds of Ms. Thompson and her neighbors as they see it. So, as we move forward with these additional SID, SIDs, I think we should keep in mind ways we can improve our communication as a city in terms of avoiding situations like this, because they result in such hard feelings with the people who are coming before us and feel like, hey, you know, we're going to give a bad deal here, which is not a situation anyone wants to be in. We don't want to be in this situation. Your council member doesn't want to be in this situation. Mr. Stube and Mr. Fitzher, the mayor, the staff, Heather, they don't want to be in this situation. So, hopefully, there's a lesson learned here in terms of better communicating to these SIDs that come, the expectation of the cost share on the engineering costs, assigned costs. And we, they actually build in the other fees in terms of legal and other things that they don't tell you about, but they're also included. But I do want to point out, Ms. Tippi Pierce, because I think on behalf of your department, I don't know if Mr. Stube ever tells you, but I think you do. You were very articulate today, explaining the process, what information's given, how this process works, and want to thank you for that. So, I would make a motion to approve.
Is there more? Is there a second? You got to know your light is on. Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. Heather, could I just indulge you for a couple more, please?
Heather Tippi Pierce, Public Works.
Thanks. I know Ms. Thompson had asked or posed a question, so I'll ask it again, if, if you wouldn't mind responding. Who, who's, who is doing the engineering on the neighboring streets or, or other SIDs for that matter?
Sure. So, we've got several engineering firms that are helping us out, and I was trying to pull up a complete list. I don't have that at my fingertips. ENA has done a couple of these districts for us already. We're pretty, pretty happy with their work. We've also had some work by Felsberg, Holt, and Ulevick, I believe. And we've had one other firm, and it escapes me right now.
Okay.
That's been working with us.
But that's typically how, you're saying, how it's done?
It's very typical for, for how we, you know, just our overall project delivery process, be it for a street improvement district, a project like 168th Street, our CSO projects. There's just the volume of work that we have as a department in front of us today necessitates outside assistance.
Okay. So, if, if this resolution is not passed today, would the project go forward?
The project could not move forward at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other thing. I, I did want to commend, you know, Susan and, and Linda and Sylvia for coming down today and their communications. I know that has been a lot over the past couple of weeks, but it, it also, you know, it's, it's nice to see, you know, neighbors kind of working together on something that they're very passionate about. So, I just wanted to commend them for those efforts.
Thank you. It's been moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded to approve item 34. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Harding?
Passed.
Jarom?
Yes.
Melton?
Yeah.
Pauls?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Harding?
Knowing that it will come back once one more time, I'll vote yes. Do you want to move forward?
Item 34 approved, 7 to 0. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7D, the public hearings on agenda items 35 through 37 shall be held on the third reading. Item 38, an ordinance to approve a real estate purchase agreement with Willie Metcalf, 2314 North 21st Street, to convey the property located at 2604 North 20th Street in the amount of $2,000.
Public hearing, agenda item number 38 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 39, an ordinance to approve a redevelopment tax increment financing loan agreement with TKNEAS LLC, Boho Books LLC, Boho's Best LLC, and Bohemian Village LLC to implement the Bohemian Cafe Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located east and west of South 13th Street and south of William Street in the amount of $275,000.
Public hearing, agenda item number 39 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 40, an ordinance to approve a redevelopment tax increment financing loan agreement with 3820 Harney LLC to implement the Blackstone Depot Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3812-3820 Harney Street in the amount of $860,000.
Public hearing on agenda item number 40 is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 41, an ordinance to approve the inter-local cooperation agreement with the Village of Eagle controlling the distribution of Kino lottery proceeds from the date of execution through May 14, 2021.
Public hearing, agenda item number 41 is today. Proponents, please.
Bill Harvey, EHPP Management Group, 11248 John Galt Boulevard. And we are the lottery operator for the City of Omaha. This is an inter-local agreement that's very similar to inter-local arrangements we already have with the City of Bennington and Douglas County, and so, we'd ask for your approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this proposal.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 42, an ordinance to provide for the naming of public park known as Damsite 15A located at approximately 168th and Fort Streets to be named Flanagan Lake in honor of Father Edward J. Flanagan.
Public hearing, agenda item number 42 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Jim Thompson, 101 South 35th Avenue. I'm also on the board of the Papio NRD, Natural Resources District, and the initiator of a resolution non-binding, as we know, back in January, to name this lake other than Father Flanagan. That non-binding resolution, we didn't act since the naming committee and since you folks have presented the Father Flanagan option, and certainly, we support that informally. We have never taken a vote on it, so I'm speaking on behalf of a consensus amongst our board members that Father Flanagan is a pretty cool lake, or name to, to have that lake in, in his honor. I also want to reiterate our longstanding partnership with entities like the City of Omaha, in this case, the State of Nebraska, Gammon Parks, Fish and Wildlife, to allow these structures to, to happen. And of course, more importantly, the taxpayers help fund them at various levels. So, we look forward to our continued relationship with the City of Omaha and future structures that help protect citizens of the, of the community. So, I'll give you my personal support that we proceed with Father Flanagan Lake. Look forward to the first baptism in the lake, when it occurs, if it occurs, but be available for any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 43, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Midlands in the amount of $77,602 to provide funding for two gang specialist positions.
Public hearing, agenda item number 43 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 44, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska on behalf of the University of Nebraska Medical Center for certain forensic and crime lab testing services to provide for the payment to the University of Nebraska Medical Center fees on a per-test basis as needed by the Omaha Police Department.
Public hearing, agenda item number 44 is today. Proponents, please.
Captain Ed Reyes with the Omaha Police Department, representing Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
I am Steve Hindick, the Chair of the Department of Pathology and Microbiology, and live at 3306 Armstrong Drive, and also happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. There are no lights. Next item.
Item, item 45, an ordinance to approve a memorandum of, of understanding with Omaha Police Officers Association to allow the City of Omaha to place Nebraska-certified law enforcement officers who are hired latterly at a pay step based above the entry-level pay step contemplated by the collective bargaining agreement based on their years of experience.
Public hearing, agenda item number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Pursuant to City Council Rule 7D, the public hearings on agenda item 46 shall be held on the third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule 7C, the public hearings on agenda items 47 through 52 shall be held on the second reading. Item 53, Chairman of the Board of Legalization reports approval of the plan of assessment with adjustments and corrections made at their regular meeting held September 12, 2017.
Move to approve. Roll call.
Harding?
Yes.
Jarom?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Festerson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 53 approved, 7 to 0. Item 55, a resolution to approve the reappointment of Jay Noddle to be a member of MECA's Board of Directors to serve a term from May 10, 2018, to May 9, 2023.
Public hearing, agenda item number 55 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Members of the city staff, I'm Jay Noddle, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village. Very pleased to be here today. Several years ago, you saw fit to appoint me to the MECA Board, and at that time, I pledged to you and to the community that I would do what I could to learn about the business and, and really do my best to make a positive contribution. I believe I've done that. I think we have quite a lot of work to do, always at MECA, during challenging times and, and other times. Several of you have been involved in some of our committees, and I, I hope you would agree that, that we all learned something through that process. So, hopefully, you'll see fit to approve me for another term of service, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, you'll have a partner that'll be with you, too, so you'll have a full board here pretty soon.
He's younger than I am, so that's good.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, I think with this appointment being a couple of months before I just wanted to say, I think with this appointment being a couple of months before the expiration of the current term, I think it sends a good message to the community that with the important work that MECA does and will be doing over the next coming years, to have that continuity of, of participants or members of that board, I think is a really important message to send. And with that, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the appointment.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item number 55. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak?
Is there anyone else that wanted to speak on the council? I'm sorry?